Welcome to the November 2nd, can you believe this November? November 2nd, 2023, meeting of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. We start every meeting with silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me in the silent prayer. Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse. Commissioner Summer Davis.
Thank you. We will open it up for public comments. Are there any public comments on Zoom? All right, we have, okay, thank you. We have several cards. We have April Colberth concerning the Veterans Commission. Yes, please come forward. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners and veterans in the community here. Yes, my name is April Colberth, and I am an Army Combat Medic Veteran. And when I heard about the funding that was shifted to the General Fund, the $31 million, it disturbed me a bit, especially coming from the Hamilton County Veterans Commission. The Hamilton County Veterans Commission is a program that is supposed to help veterans that are in need with funding and other items as well. Sometimes when you would go to the Hamilton County Veterans Commission as a veteran, it could be a humiliating experience. For decades, they have not been the most welcoming and respectful place for veterans to go. I've watched other veterans sit and, you know, contemplate whether to leave or not to be served. I'm not saying this happens every time and that it's everyone at the commission that does this, but for any one of them to suffer that, it's humiliating and it's humiliating to watch. So for me, I needed their services from time to time. Even when I was raising my son, I was injured. I'm right now a service-connected disabled veteran. I've needed their services. Sometimes you go in there and you might get some help, but without humbling yourself completely, just in the initial process. So please find out where these funds went, because if they left the commission that easily to go to general funding, how many veterans sat in those offices waiting for money just to pay their own bills to help with raising their kids? Or if they went back to school to help make that money connect for their, just for them to even increase the quality of their lives just by their own efforts? Please find out where this money went. How was it spent? Was it spent for veteran funding? I think that's my time.
Thank you for your comment. Let me say, and I'm going to open up on this issue for my colleagues before we go to the next, because it's another subject unless there's anyone else here to speak about the Veterans Commission. First of all, let me say thank you for your service to our country. Thank you very much, and to all the veterans that have serviced our country. I want to say, each of us, we'll get to speak for ourselves, but I know that this board, each of us on an individual basis, as we go into the budget, and it's important because we're in the budget time now, we will be passing a budget probably in the next month, well definitely in the next month, we're in November. And I know that each of us, and I know when I first got here, I said, how could we give more money to veterans, not knowing exactly how it's set up? And the way the system of the veterans' services, and I'll have Mr. Ludo explain it, so I've said it properly, the way it's set up, it is appointed by a common pleas court. We don't make any appointments. We don't decide who the director is. However, all of us, we said we wanted to put more money into veterans. And what was brought up with Channel 9, I want to thank them for bringing this to the attention, because one of the things that I want to see us move to is a customer service-based model. And when people come in, they're treated as customers. I am very upset to know that other counties are doing more, giving more, and being more customer-friendly toward veterans. And people who know me, my grandfather would be turning over in his grave because he was a veteran and raised me up to know the importance of veterans as he came out of the Navy and what he did for this country. So it is totally unacceptable that any veteran living in Hamilton County, because that's the county we're in, is treated with nothing, anything less than first-class service. I got a call from Jill Mallory last night, who also was a veteran, who indicated that he had someone contact him that had issues and had to go over there, and it was not a pleasant situation. Teresa Kitt, now Teresa Burns, disabled veteran, called and has a lot of concerns. All of our offices, we're getting a lot of calls about this. This has to be one of our top priorities, and I believe for me it is. One thing about me, don't mess with the seniors, don't mess with the babies, and don't mess with the veterans. Now, I'm going to have asked Mr. Ludo to have someone here today, and he'll be able to talk about what that status is. But we're in the budget process, and we're looking to have directors and those people come before us. We can fund it, but we got to also make sure the funding gets to the people. And so without even knowing this was an issue, I had heard about the PAC, the new PAC that was passed federally for grants for veterans. And I reached out to Congressman Landsman, who's on the federal committee for veterans from down here. And he said, yeah, I'd like to do something with that. And I said, I'd like to do something too. And so November 18th, which is a Saturday, we are having something at the main library for veterans to be able to fill out for these different grants that are available, because I wanted more coming here. And that's going to happen on November 18th. But as it relates to what's going on with this, I wanted to have the administrator, and then I open up to my colleagues, but I want to hear from the administrator on this $31 million over five-plus years that was reported, and where are we with the Veterans Services Commission?
Sure, Madam President, Commissioners. So just a little bit of background, and the administration is still looking into some of this as well, but as we get more information certainly provided to the board. But as I said, I think I said last time when we were talking about this, the Veterans Services, just at the risk of boring folks who might be watching at home, the Veterans Services Commission under Ohio law is a separate entity under county government than the Board of County Commissioners. So as you kind of indicated, Madam President, there is the Board of County Commissioners under Ohio law, there is also a separate Veterans Services Commission. The Board does not appoint their members. What the Board does do is every year, the Veterans Services Commission provides a budget request to the Board, to the administration, and the Board approves that budget. And the Board has always approved the budget that has been requested by the Veterans Services Commission with the qualification that we budget a certain amount based upon the trends of that organization. And we always say, and the Board actually, it's maybe the only organization that the Board does it for, where you actually pass a resolution that says, we're budgeting this amount, but if more is needed, the Board will appropriate it. So come back if we find that more is needed, and the Board will provide that. So in terms of the question about the $31 million, I think it is less a question of where did the money go? Because this is not a matter of the Veterans Services Commission requesting $31 million, which the Board provided and then went somewhere else. The Ohio law authorizes a cap that the Veterans Services Commission can request up to. Those dollars were not requested. So the, it's not, the money went somewhere and then went somewhere else. The money was, just wasn't requested. The Veterans Services Commission has received a budget and has lived within that budget for most part since I've been here. I don't know that they've ever overspent what they've been provided. I don't know that they've ever come back. I'll follow up on that too, to make sure, but I don't know that they've ever come back asking for more. So it is a separate entity under the revised code. The Board does approve their budget. In terms of the $31 million, it's not money that was appropriated and then was then redirected to other projects. Those are dollars that were never requested from the Board. In terms of the commission, I do know that their executive director is unable to be here today to report out to the Board. I believe that their commission itself was meeting today to receive some information on this very issue in advance of their public meeting on Wednesday at 2:00. So there is a meeting coming up, public meeting Wednesday at 2:00 over at 2:30 East 9th, which is their next regular public meeting. So Commissioner, happy to answer any other questions at this point, but just wanted to provide that basic information.
Yeah, I wanted to also, since they're going to be meeting on Wednesday, I put the request out. They couldn't meet this Thursday. I'd like to have the Chair of the Board or someone come in on Thursday, so that the public, because that story has a lot of public implications, not just for people that's veterans, but for family members, et cetera. And I think everyone should know what's going on. So I wanted to put that out again, the request to have maybe the Board chair, if the executive director can't make it, the Board chair to come before this commission on Thursday of next week. So I wanted if you will send that invitation out as well. And then also, the question was, when you look at some of the things that have been done, it seems to be a little outdated, you know, in terms of marketing and comparison to other counties. The other counties are providing transportation to the veterans to get to where they're going. We're providing bus passes or tokens. Other areas are advertising and marketing so that the veterans know what to do, where to go. That budget seemed very low, I think about $7,000, and it was including of a website. I wanted to ask also, is there other things that we could do outside of the commission? We don't control this, an independent board. That's why I have problems with independent boards, because you just can't do anything. They are independent, and here we are with our hands tied. But is there other things, as we're putting this budget together, that we could have a marketing added to our marketing budget, that we market some of the services, or we're doing other things? I'd like to get that from you to see what other things we can do outside of this commission that will help veterans, that we might be able to do as a board or consider. I'm not saying we're going to do it, because everybody has to vote on it, but I'm looking for some stuff we can control, that we can get out, that we can connect. And so if you could provide something to us regarding that before we pass a budget.
Provide options, Commissioner.
Thank you. Open up, Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you, and I too want to thank the Speaker for your service. Thank you for coming in today. We've received a number of calls to our office, a number of emails regarding this issue. So grateful that you lent your voice to the conversation. It gives us a better understanding of what's going on and what your experience has been. So it's very helpful. I too, you know, we approve of the budget every year that's requested from the Veterans Services Commission. I too want to do everything that we can for veterans in our community and make sure that they receive the benefits that they deserve. And so in light of that, every year when the Veterans Services Commission requests their budget, we approve of that budget again with this caveat and actually in writing that if more is needed, this Board stands at the ready to provide that funding to help veterans in this community. And so I don't know how much stronger and support we can be than that, to say, you know, we're giving you what you've requested, and we stand at the ready to help with additional funding if necessary. And so I too am anxious to hear from the Veterans Services Commission, whether it's somebody on staff or one of the Board members, somebody to shed some light on what's going on here, especially relative to some of our neighboring counties and the services that they're providing. And so we can get a better sense of, you know, why the funding is what it is, why the request is what it is, and then see if we can do anything to make sure that when individuals come in and say their needs are not being met, or rather, they're not treated in a way that seems welcoming, what is that about? And how can we change the environment there? So that's all I've got. I'm looking forward to having the conversation. And I do want to say that, you know, as in the budget process, we hear from all the different departments throughout the county for the same reasons. So we can understand what the budget request is, so we can understand what they're doing in their different departments. And so this is not unlike every other department that we fund, that we would have them come in and report out about their funding requests. So I think it's entirely appropriate, and the timing is now. So I'm looking forward to seeing that next week.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. Thank you also for coming. I wanted to yield some of my time if you were not finished, because it seems like you were at the end of what you were saying. Were you able to complete your statement? Great, thank you. Well, I have a few things to say. These veterans have, as we know, have given their lives for us. I have many veterans in my family. Something just does not smell right for me. Something just does not smell right for me. It was said earlier that if they needed more money, they could come to us. Well, they don't need more money because they're not spending the money. They're not doing what they need to do to help our veterans. The Director, from my understanding, has been in office since 1991, about almost 25 years. And so I don't know him, as I was saying earlier, never met him. I would like to get some statistics and data on who's on the Veterans Service Commission, Jeff, even before they come. I'd like to do my research, how long they've been on there, and also some minutes from the meetings that they've had. We have an obligation, as was said earlier, to help our veterans. We put them in every category as far as, there are a lot of homeless veterans that need help. There's so much that they need. And so this is a top priority for me, that we make sure they get the money that they deserve and that if we need to revamp something, I know we have no control currently over the Veteran Service Commission, but we need to take a look inside of that Commission itself. And also the Director, what has the Director been doing? When you read the article, and also thank you for the article, and then I guess the nerve that was in there, $588 for bus passes, as was mentioned earlier. I mean, it tells, 538, I'm sorry, I gave $50 more. There's, the need is there. What are we doing, what are they doing? And so we will find that out very quickly. And I know we will have a representative come in, but before that, I'm requesting statistics and data, maybe another, for the last five years of what they've done with the money, what their minutes look like, and how they are meeting the needs of our veterans. So it's appalling. If any of this is correct, it's appalling. That's all I have.
Thank you for that. And again, the reason, you know, I have a lot of concerns, independent boards that are unelected, but then the headline says Hamilton County, you know? And so now here we are trying to figure this out. And that is, I think, is some of the problems that I see, whether it's how the state set things up or how cities sometimes set things up. And I've been screaming about this as I've been learning. You've got all these independent boards with superpower and the citizens, like yourself, we can't get to them. And then when it comes to us, we trying to give more money. We're, we've given money, the money not being spent. We can't, you know, then we say, come before us and meet, and nobody's available, all these boards. And we don't appoint the Board, but we have the money. We can put a million dollars, but if they don't spend it, as the Commissioner said, then it looks at us, and the headline says Hamilton County. That's one of the major problems right now, is that we've got these independent boards that get the money, and then once they get the money, it's up to them. So I agree, and I want, that was good to ask for those, that information. But if they can come together on Wednesday, I don't know why they couldn't come here today on Thursday. And we are supposed to be the purse strings. And we getting hit with the questions, and then everybody disappears. Can't be found, not available, and then we're here. And that's a problem because we're accountable to the citizens of Hamilton County. So I agree, and I want to ask Mr. Ludo, is there some creative way that doesn't go against the law, but puts the power back under us, the Board, to be able to do some other things to make sure that we get the help to the citizens? We had to kind of do the same thing when the ARPA money came. We had to pull it in to, under our leadership in terms of some of our departments, so that when people call, we can at least call and say, where is these checks? Where is this? Versus giving it out to the Board and we can't ask any questions. So I think it's been brought up, and they should be on the calendar to already have met with us. So I want to thank Craig McKee for bringing that forward. I know he's a veteran himself. And just to let you know, that's why we were, we're all surprised, because it's an independent Board. We thought we gave the money, and we're upset that the money hasn't gotten to the people. So that's why I want to ask you, Mr. Ludo, please send us other options. We might want to do something different. Some veterans, Office of Veteran Affairs that's under our office, under our administration, and still can work with the Commission, but we've got an Office of Veteran Affairs, an ombudsman, if you will, that will be the ombudsman for Hamilton County. We do it with the Office of Small Business. We've done it with the Office of Economic Development. Maybe we need to have that, even if it's, even if it starts off part-time. And then we can make sure that it's advertised, promoted, report back to us so that we, because we all care about this issue, we need to be able to get this information in real time. So that would be my recommendation, looking into, is that something we can do? And maybe the money they not spend, then we put it over with this Office of Veterans, with a Director that would be reporting to us. So that's what we're, we'll look at all these things, but the good news is, it's budget time, and you got us before we pass the budget. So now all of us, as we're thinking about what we're wanting in it and putting in it, and as Jeff, you're putting something forward, hopefully this can be also addressed. So thank you so much for your service, and thanks for coming down here. We apologize for how you've been treated. You should not be treated with anything but utmost respect, but we're going to try to work as a Board to change this. Sure, go ahead.
Just, you know, a lot of times you don't see veterans show up for things like this. It's not because they don't want to, it's because they don't want to be seen as that stereotype of begging for help or complaining to the government that they serve. So I just want to put that out there. It's not that veterans don't care because they don't be at these events, it's just because, you know, you don't want to show up, being seen like that. So, so thank you all for listening.
I appreciate it, yes. My grandfather used to say that, I don't want no handout. But it's not a handout, it's what you deserve, what you fought for, the freedoms we enjoy. So thank you very much, we really appreciate it. Did you guys have more? Okay. Okay, okay, we've got some other speakers. We've got Larry Falcon wants to talk about, oh, wait a minute, we got a hearing on MSD. How do we do that? I can't remember. Do I take them now? Okay, after I open it. Okay, one second, Mr. Falcon, I'm sorry. I got one more speaker that's not on that subject, and then we're going to open a hearing, then you'll come up. Derek Dansby, Cincinnati Realtors.
Good afternoon. It is so good to be back. I realized that I had not been back here since April during Realtors Week, when we had a very good presentation to you all. I just wanted to thank you for that time and that visibility and the opportunity to be heard about what the Greater Cincinnati Realtors Association is doing. As you all know, we are one of 108 chapters of the National Association of Real Estate Brokers, which is a trade organization designed to provide, to be the premier network for Black real estate professionals. I wanted to let you all know that since that time, you should be very proud of our organization. We have now increased our membership dramatically. We have, we now have over 140 members of our organization, and we are now the eighth largest chapter in the country. So we are really excited about that. I also want to thank President Commissioner Reese. During our morning session that same day, we had a outstanding time listening from, listening to yourself, listening to Robert Bell, as well as a presentation from Laura from the Port Authority. As a result of our feedback, we are now entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Port Authority, where we will now, as Realtors, sell 25% of all of their properties that they sell. That is a monumental achievement, and I know that if it were not for us coming and presenting here that morning, that day, that that probably would not have happened. We will be having some upcoming press announcements, and I'll make sure that each of your offices are contacted. But the timing is perfect because this morning, we put eight new properties on the market. And I just want you all to know that we are here and we're ready to do more. Thank you.
Thank you. That is huge news. When we, you had the big Realtors Day here, and I went in there and it was hot and heavy in there with the Port Authority. But this is the type of partnership, and congratulations to the Port Authority and Laura with her leadership and with you and the Realtors, which is the number one organization of African-American real estate people. I also want to let you know, in our budget, the presentation for economic development was made, and in there is a possible 300,000, it's supposed to be 500, but well, right now it's 300, for small business, minority business to own commercial real estate. That's the, it's huge. So it's been a great, great week, and I know your team will be working with Mr. Forte and Alloy and Mr. Bell on that. So that's fantastic. And I do want to thank Administrator Aludo, because I went to him about you having this day, and we had a lot of our folks procurement, et cetera, in that workshop as well, so. Thank you, Beta. Okay, all right, thank you. Now, Commissioners, if you don't mind, can we get to the public hearing or do you, and then we'll do our, is that okay with you guys? Okay. All right, we have a public hearing we're going into with MSD. Is this where I, where do I, what do I do?
Just move, we'll open the public hearing, and then I'd suggest that we hear first from Director Christie.
Okay.
Before, it might just make more sense to get that presentation as context prior to a public conference.
Got you, okay. So we'll hear from Director, and then we'll have our two comments. Okay? Awesome. Welcome.
They're getting that set up, I believe, presentation. Good afternoon, President Reese and Commissioners, Administrator and staff here today. I'm Diana Christie, the Director of MSD. I'm here today on behalf of MSD to present the 2024 Operating and Capital Budget Request, along with the Revised Rate Schedule for Sewer Rates Beginning in 2024. You've been provided with budget books that detail these requests. So I'm going to give an overview today and hope to answer any questions or provide additional information before we come back next week for a second public hearing. Also with me today are Deputy Directors Ryan Welsh and Jenny Richmond and our Budget Officer, Joseph Schuster. So we have a relatively brief agenda, and I do, I'm going to try to be a little shorter than I am sometimes. But before I dive into the numbers, it's important that we take note of the responsibility that MSD has in serving our region to protect the environment and public health through the collection and treatment of wastewater, and ultimately to return clean water to the local rivers and streams. So how do we do this? Well, what we do is we treat 160 million gallons of wastewater every day, and we do that with lots of infrastructure valued somewhere over 13 billion. We serve the area, the region with, you know, that's a population of almost a quarter million of people, so the wastewater that's coming from homes and businesses. And you can see here on this map, slightly different one than I've shared before, but this just shows you the MSD watersheds and where our treatment plants are located. So there are seven watersheds, the largest one in the middle there with our Mill Creek Treatment Plant, just on the west end of downtown. We do have two additional treatment plants up north that are in that watershed that just treat neighborhoods. But generally, the seven wastewater treatment plants by watershed are shown on that map, and the two additional are up on the north. We also have around 100 pump stations, 3,000 miles of sewers. To put that into context, that's about the distance from LA to New York. And through the Wet Weather Improvement Program, we have added about 44 acres of green infrastructure and nine wet weather facilities that operate as needed. So that 160 million gallons per day is about 65 billion gallons per year. And our job is, we work 24/7. We have operators at our facilities around the clock, and the goal is that you don't have to think about us. You don't have to think about the work we do. But today, we do because we're here to talk about what it costs to provide this vital service and to request the funds that we need to continue our operations. We're going to hear a little bit about how costs are continuing to rise for us and for all industries. We have increased costs to pay our employees what they're worth, to purchase chemicals and the energy we need to run our facilities, and to rehab the sewers and facilities that we have that are aging. But at about $630 per year, and that's just an average residential customer, it really is a bargain for the work that we provide, the service that we provide. If you compare that to many of our other consumer bills, there you have a figure for internet and cell service combined of 1,500 a year. I guess I'm not the average US household because I know in my house, we pay a lot more than that just for our cell phones, but I do have two teenagers. So just like to, you know, put some of the costs of the service we provide into context. So how we develop our budget, lots of considerations go into this. We really work on this year round, but really kind of begin the preparation for the new budget in the spring and early summer. We do our best to build a budget that balances the growing needs on our services with community affordability. Again, aging infrastructure, you hear about it a lot, but what that means is, you know, we're using sewers that are 100 and 200 years old. We have equipment that is well beyond its useful life. We have equipment that is in operation every day, so pump screens taking in flow and in storm events, that's large debris, limbs, rocks. Things get damaged, things fail, and we have to be able to keep operations running. So our operating funds that we're going to talk about help us, you know, hopefully get, hopefully get ahead of and stay ahead of more expensive, more expensive capital and emergency replacement of assets through proactive repair. We also have the next phase of our consent decree mandated Wet Weather Improvement Program to reduce overflows and improve water quality in our rivers and streams. So we, and one other, you know, challenge we have is needing to stay ahead of regulatory challenges that we're facing in our industry, like new regulations for chemicals like PFOS, which is the forever chemical, you're probably hearing more and more about, that's going to impact our operations in the very near future. Okay, so getting to the cost, what does it cost? Our 2024 Operating Budget Request, on this slide here is a, is scaled down from what is provided in your budget book in terms of the level of detail. The full detail is provided on page 13 of the budget book, but this shows you here the overall 2024 Operating Budget Request, which is 237.9 million. That is just about a 3% increase over the 2023 approved budget. Breaking that down, so looking at our personnel and non-personnel, now what I don't have here is by division, so again, that's in your budget book. But our personnel costs are built based on the employees that we have in each of our seven divisions and our non-personnel as well. So we look and we really task our division managers and our superintendents that run these sections and run these groups to look at their budget, that was their budget for 2023. Again, we start early in the year and really project what's going to be needed for the next year. We also work with the county in building this. The county provides us targets, and we aim to do everything we can to really stay within those, that targeted guidance on these budgets. A lot of the focus and the comparisons have been on that subtotal amount for the operation and maintenance. And you can see there that the total operation and maintenance request is just over 5% from 2023. And I'm going to get into the increases on the next slide. The SBU program is requested to remain flat, and I will talk about that as well. And the debt payment is just slightly lower than it was in 2023, and those are driven by our existing responsibilities on our debt. So it's, that number is determined. As you can see, I just shared there the comparison with the prior budgets. We had a very slight increase from 2022 to 2023, so really still kind of competing with all the inflation that we've experienced over the last few years. the last few years. So what, what is driving the increases between 2023 and 2024? Starting with personnel, so this is about a $3 million increase over the 2023 budget or about 4.6%. The primary driver of this are cost of living increases for all of the union bargaining units that we have at MSD. We talked about these last year. However, one union in particular, the Code Union, was approved after we completed that request, but all of the bargaining units obtained a 5%, 4%, 3% increase. And the compounding effect of that is a more significant increase and especially as you look at the breakdown by divisions where we have high numbers of those Code Employees in our Engineering Division in particular, you see a higher increase. This personnel budget for 2024 does not fund any new employees on our TO. We currently have about, I believe it's 677 positions on our TO. However, we do not have all of those positions funded. Every year, we include a position vacancy credit essentially. And in this year's budget, we are actually crediting and only funding, we're funding 60 less positions. So it's about 617 on our TO. Last year, we had a expected vacancy that we budgeted for 45 positions, but we've continued to carry a much higher vacancy. We've continued to have record levels of retirements and the hiring process has just been slow to catch up. So right now, we actually have under 600 staff on hand. The non-personnel increase, so this is again, all divisions combined, our non-personnel increase is about 3.1 million higher than 2023. And the drivers there are really the same thing we talked about last year, the chemical costs for treatment that are just needed every day. There's a lot of volatility there. We, you know, we have to have those chemicals on hand and we see those costs continuing to go up as well as just costs generally for goods and services. Any equipment purchases, any services that we need to hire out for are continuing to increase. We also have had increasing costs for our maintenance of our green infrastructure. That's the property maintenance and daily crews on a lot of those green infrastructure facilities. As you can see on the, the figure on this slide, this is the breakdown of the non-personnel budget by division. So that, that non-personnel budget was 69 million. Those, the largest divisions in terms of usage of the non-personnel is treatment and collection. So that's our core operations. They make up, you know, well over two thirds of the costs of our non-personnel. And then the last category here, our other non-personnel category is a higher percentage increase, but it's $1.3 million. This is a smaller category of our expenditures. This includes our, our general fund overhead, our, our fleet and our office technology and equipment allowance. Primarily, this increase is related to fleet. This is an area where we have really cut back every year when we're, you know, kind of trying to do our best to cut the budget. But we are, and, and there's more information included in your budget book about this, but the large fleet that we have, as they continue to age, those trucks really become unreliable and we're spending more on maintenance than we should on purchasing new vehicles. But for example, these are like hydro excavators and flush vac trucks, costs of over 300,000 apiece. So, you know, replacing a handful of these is where that cost is coming from. That other non-personnel also includes a small increase due to a transfer of a, of the early retirement program costs that were in a different divisional budget. So it's just an accounting change. It, it skews that percentage, but it's not a change in those costs at all. It's the same dollar amount just moved on the line items. So sewer backup program, this is part of our operating budget. We just pull it out of that O and M. Again, we are not requesting an increase in the sewer backup program budget. So it is again, 11.2 million, which is what it is currently. This is sufficient in our minds to cover all of the services that we provide. That's the response and investigation 24/7, the cleaning services for eligible properties, reimbursement for damages for any eligible properties, and then the protection program from sewer backups. We report on the sewer backup program monthly. We update this to our website. So what I have here is just a snapshot through 2023, through, sorry, through September 2023 is the most complete information we have at this time. But on the website, you can see every year, you can see the entire program costs since 2004. And as you see there, the running total is over 150 million on this program to date since 2024. I also have provided a, just a snapshot of the SBU expenditures from 2022 to show generally where the dollars are spent. And you can see, large majority, at least this is the last year or two or maybe three years, is really going to the prevention program. Of course, paying, paying the damage claims, it's just haven't had as costly damage claims. And then the, the cleaning and investigation costs there. So that's just a breakdown from 2022. I pulled that from this data that we have. Again, you can peruse that and I can share that link after, so you know exactly where to find it on our website. So the last time we were here, I think there was a request for just another snapshot in terms of the SBU budget. And I wanted to show over the last five years, what was budgeted compared to what was spent on the program. So that's what you see here. In the years 2018 and 2019, I believe both of those years, I know at least one of those years, we came back to the board for additional funding as needed. And that's always, you know, been our understanding. We want to make sure and, and we have no doubt that we have the funding needed to address the, the investigations and response timely. Typically, we are needing additional funding for things like the sewer backup prevention program or claims. And, and that's something where we have time to come back should those costs increase again with increasing wet weather and, you know, and, and impact to property owners. So you can see, we, we've not had to request additional funding for the last three years and have kept that budget relatively flat. Okay, I'm going to move to the Capital Improvement Program. So our capital budget, we, we share with the board a five-year plan annually. The requested 2024 budget is 260 million, a little over 260 million. But as we always provide to the board, the capital budget dollars that are appropriated at passage of this annual budget are only 84.2 million. And I'm going to go through what that makes up and, and what the difference is there between the overall 2024 CIP budget and what it is the board will be approving in terms of an appropriation of funds, should you choose to approve this. So the appropriation upon passage includes two different exhibits. So there's 33 projects that we're requesting funding for planning, design and easement. So that's the early stages of these projects. These are a lot of projects that will be fundamental for the future Phase Two projects. That's about 47.6 million. And then we have construction allowances. This makes up the 36.6 million and those are detailed in Exhibit B of the legislation. The construction allowances are really those core allowances for the, for us to be able to do proactive rehab work on our sewers and also like critical asset management and emergencies when they arise. So things in our treatment plant, needing to buy equipment, those do not need the planning and design work of the other larger CIP projects. So we're able to do those throughout the year with these allowance dollars. You can see there that the increase in 2024, I'll move to the next slide, is significant. The 2024 budget is an 85% increase over the 2023 CIP budget. And that is primarily due to one project. We talked about this last month. This was the Little Miami Solids and Odor Control Project where we're constructing an anaerobic digester to manage our solids. So the construction cost of that makes up almost the entire construction budget that we just shared on the, on the last page. The good thing, good news about this project is that we do intend to utilize low interest loan financing through the state revolving loan program or the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. And we are intending to use or apply for reimbursement through the Inflation Reduction Act where we are eligible for potentially up to $50 million reimbursement for the clean energy component of this project. So while it's a costly project, we have those favorable financial opportunities that, that we are continuing to work and working closely with the county to maximize that. You can see there, and, and as I mentioned previously, the 2024 budget, it includes all the projects for the now approved Phase 2A. It also includes fundamental, you know, planning, design work and preparation for what's still under development for a Phase 2B. The figures shown are showing the 2024 projects. You can see there that a large percentage is something that we, we like to say we would get WIP credit for. That means it's a Wet Weather Improvement Plan project. But the, the current projects that make that up really have a large amount of asset management benefit as well, where we're doing things like replacing aging pump stations. So really has a dual benefit. And then just briefly, the, again, the, the CIP is a five-year Capital Improvement Plan. So this provides the numbers for the additional four years. The board does approve the entire plan, but again, no dollars are appropriated and it's, you know, generally, there are changes in those out years as we, you know, work through the year and especially given the upcoming development of the Phase 2B. The Capital Improvement Program is something that we're continuously managing. So we are currently managing projects that are about, you know, 1.5 billion in various stages. We have construction projects underway, we have planning and design underway, and then we are, you know, just rolling the work every year and planning for the future. The best thing that we can do is really continue to, to plan and perform risk-based prioritization of our needs, knowing that the needs are always going to be greater than the budget available. So we perform things like sewer condition assessments, facility planning, really key there to prioritize the highest need projects. And finally, on the revised rate schedule that we have presented to the board, this year MSD does recommend a 3% increase to the current schedule of sewer charges for 2024. And this is just to, to meet district revenue requirements. MSD, you know, follows our financial guidelines, our financial policy and evaluates the needed revenue annually. The revenue is principally derived from our sewer service charge, our surcharges and our industrial pretreatment charges. This increase is based on the projected funds needed to maintain the operations and level of service we're providing today. As many people know, inflation is, has slowed down, but it is still above 3% this year. So again, we are looking to increase rates really just to maintain existing operations. This is based on financial metrics, including fund balances that are needed to maintain our debt service coverage and to keep bond ratings high for future borrowing needs. MSD works through the revenue needs collaboratively with the county and the county financial advisors. They provide us guidance and this, you know, this rate increase, we believe, is, is what is needed and, and, you know, shared by the county financial advisors as well as the MSD financials, financial advisors. And while this increase is modest for the average customer at about $1.50 a month, you know, we know that, that is more challenging to some. And again, everybody is not the average customer, so the impact on you may be different. We understand those challenges. I do always want to remind folks, and this is in our legislative packet too, MSD does have a customer assistance program. That customer assistance program provides a 25% discount for low-income seniors that are eligible for the program and something we'd always be happy to speak more about if there's questions as far as the eligibility and the participation in that program. That is all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm going to open it up, Vice President Dreyhouse.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Diana. I'm just going to start off with a couple of questions. I may have more, but don't want to hog the microphone. So thank you, first of all, for the cooperation with the Hamilton County team. I think this has been a constructive dialogue between the city and the county, which has not always been the case, but I'm grateful that it is this year. And so I am, I, I have gotten a briefing from the county team prior to this meeting. So I, a lot of my questions have been answered and you answered some of them during your presentation. Couple of things though, I want to, one question I have and then another thing I want to highlight. Would you go back to the asset management portion of your slides? Can you do that? Can you, I'm sorry, that's a curve ball. Sorry for the staff.
Did you mean in the capital?
Yep. It's a teardrop shape.
Yep.
There we go. So help me read this. So the WIP is responding to consent decree. The asset management is to take care of the system that we already have. My recollection from years prior is that this has been more balanced than this. And I'm, I'm not saying it in a critical way, I'm just, hasn't it been more of a 50/50 as opposed to the 73/18 that we're seeing on this?
Yes. Okay. And that, I think.
Do you help explain that, I suppose?
And, and really why I wanted to share this slide is, it, it really is primarily because we have, you know, certain projects like the solids and odor control project that we are putting in that WIP category projects. It is part of an overall plan for that facility. And therefore, you know, you, you have a larger number of projects that we would place in the WIP category, but we're really, you know, as a utility, that's a strong asset management need and, and that's just one example. So there are projects where you're getting that asset management, but you're, you're addressing a, a WIP requirement as well.
So it sounds then like there is some like gray area there where it's really both?
Yes.
It's not one or the other. So can you then help me better understand of the 73%, what would you say might be in that gray area where it really, it's, it's WIP and asset management?
If it's okay, Ryan, would you be able to answer that better than me? I don't want to, do, I mean, you might not know exactly what's in the 73, but is it?
Just an estimate.
Is it anything other than Little Miami? I'm guessing it's the pump station as well, correct?
Yeah, so some, some of that is design, some of it is, or some of it is the construction. It could have gone the other way. You know, if we weren't claiming that for WIP credit, which we are, it would look, it would sway the, the opposite way because Little Miami solids essentially is asset management project, but it's required for the, the future phase, the WIP project. So it, there's a lot of flexibility there that, that we have. And I'll just add that the, years ago, it was determined that we should spend $50 million a year and $0.6 in asset management, which is about 80 million today. So the only way that you have a 50/50 balance is something that we kind of thought of as a rule of thumb a few years ago is when your, your total CIP is, you know, in the 100 million, 120 million dollar range. So as we see these higher numbers moving forward because of the, of the, of the WIP essentially, you're going to see that skewed more towards WIP and away from asset management. Doesn't mean the asset management work isn't being done.
Well, let, let me ask you then, since, so that, that's an important point. So you're, we're spending more and so even though the numbers, it's no longer a 50/50, help me then with, so if asset management, say, was, you know, whatever, 50 million, say, in previous budgets, which represented about half, is this, in this current budget, about 50 million still? It's just that we're spending more in the WIP?
It, it's probably more than 50 million.
Okay.
Is asset management because those, those projects that are WIP projects have so much asset management value within them. Mill Creek Pump Station, which is, is designed funds. Mill Creek Pump Station, which is, is designed funds for next year, that's a great example. That was needed. It, it needed to be replaced, needed to be upgraded, whether or not it's a WIP project or not. So if there was no consent decree, no WIP program, we would still be doing that work and you would call it all asset management.
I, I get it. And I, I do understand why you categorize like you do. Can, it, can you help provide, just on that one piece, kind of, rather than the percentage, maybe the dollar amount, it's year over year, so we could get a clearer picture, especially the asset management part? I, you know, my, my concern, it's not so much a concern, the question is about taking care of what we already have. And so I just, and I hear you saying, we are doing that, it's just the percentages are skewed because of the dollar amount. So can, you, you know what I'm getting at? It's just something that better clarifies really what we're spending by way of asset management versus last year and the year before, and then what we're spending this year by way of WIP as opposed to this year and the year before. And that, but maybe in addition to this percentage piece, might give a bigger picture of that. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. All right. And then my, my other piece was about the SBU program. I just want to be clear on this one, this is something that citizens care about. So my understanding from the presentation is that we have been allocating over the past few years more than what has been necessary to address the need. I think, you know, it's okay, it's good to have the money there in case, but the weather has been different, I guess, over the couple of years, especially this past year. And so the idea is that there is no request for an increase because we didn't spend all of what was there in the last budget cycle. The need was less, I heard, I thought it was 5 million or so, which is quite a bit lower than the 11.2 that was requested. So I just wanted to be clear on that and make sure that citizens will be clear that that program is fully funded. If we were to need to put more funding into that program, that you would be coming before this board and requesting for that funding. But at this point, we've got more than we need, given the, the lower number of major weather events. Is that-
Yes, that's a correct characterization. I'll just maybe clarify a little bit. So on the budget, we don't really know exactly where we are for 2023 yet, but looking at 2022 and 21, there's been about 3 million left over, right? So that just goes back into our, you know, into our funds for, yeah, for the next year, not into the SBU. But that, that money is returned to the source. But the, the program itself is, has been fully funded, the services are not changing. And I also want to be clear that in terms of the funds that are budgeted, we have, we prioritize and we will have available the ability to address any emergency response crews. That excess fund, if we ever need it, is typically for things that we have time to come back to the board to get. We would be doing, you know, the prevention program projects. So we're looking out and saying, you know, we've already committed to this, we're doing this work, this is going to be the cost. That's when we come back to the board if we needed to, to get additional funding. And so I, I just want to be clear that we are not in, in our mind, you know, at any risk of underfunding the program or not being able to respond timely. It's really just that, you know, unless things change, and if they were, we would have, we would have time to come back to the board.
Are there prevention programs out there that you, that are kind of in the pipeline to fund?
Yeah, we have many projects that are in that, you know, maybe around 50 or 70. We have a lot of projects that we're, are, are in that program, we're doing the evaluations, working with the homeowners and determining the proper solution. So we do have a pretty good, you know, projection of that as we work through it.
Save my additional questions for you.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation. Couple of questions. Seems like deja vu to me. I'll bring up about the SBU in a minute, but you mentioned very calmly about that your staff vacancies. You should have 677, but you have 600 right now. Didn't seem disturbed about it. 77 people that you say you need that you don't have, how does that affect the impact or efficiency of the running of MSD?
That's a fair question. I would say, so we, really, any entity is always going to have vacancies, and we would like to have something closer to 40. I mean, that's what we have budgeted in the past. So we never budget for a full complement of positions filled 100% of the time all year long. And we have positions on our TO kind of knowing that, you know, there's always going to be departures and a lapse of time in filling those positions. I think all organizations experience that, especially in the public sector. But we have had a higher number of vacancies than, than we'd like, and it does cause, cause us issues with efficiencies and, and management of certain areas. And we're continuing to work very closely with city HR and, you know, other, just really looking at, at what's happening in the industry to continue to recruit and retain staff. But again, a lot of this is due to higher than expected or, or higher than normal, maybe it is expected, retirements right now, just given where our workforce is. And so we don't always know the date somebody is going to choose. They're eligible, but they might not retire for some time. So we can't always plan for that. And, and another thing, in, in public service, we can't really hire in advance of people vacating. So there's always, you know, there's always a gap, and it is difficult to, to get back to where we, where we would like to be. So going into next year, you know, we're going to continue to try to close that gap and get closer to that 40 vacancies, which is a much more manageable and where we would expect to be. But really, we have work to do on that.
I can remember about three years ago, you, you added some additional positions that weren't there before. Is that correct?
Yes, we have added positions. And interestingly, there's certain areas where we've been, where we've had success in bringing folks in. In fact, our operations, our treatment plans, we've been very successful, and that's one of the areas where we did add those particular positions. And we've been bringing in new people and retaining on the operations. And some of the areas where we're struggling or, and where we know we have more need is perhaps in the more professional and the engineering and the accounting roles tend to be a challenge for us right now.
Okay, thank you. And I, I heard you say they're not funded, though they, those vacancies are not funded. But at this point, you're not asking to have them, any of them funded, correct?
We are, we have a credit accounting for about 60 positions to remain vacant. So the positions, you know, which positions those are that can remain in flex, but that's correct.
So explain to me, you say you have a credit to have 60 remain vacant. Does that mean the money is sitting there once you've, what?
No, it just means that in order to develop the request, so when we look at the employees we have, you know, and whether they're, they're filled or unfilled, we know what the cost and given the, you know, the employees' benefits and potential increases, we project that out for the number of positions on our TO, and then we look at the vacancies and we basically take, take that money off of what we're requesting, acknowledging that we will carry a certain number of vacancies every year. So it's, so it, you know, it, and we will, there's, I know that we will not be able to get exactly where we want to be next year, but that is our goal, you know, is to get back to a more manageable vacancy rate.
Thank you. And I can remember a couple of years ago, I had talked about, do we need to revamp this SBU program? And the reason why is really the, what you, I don't know if you can put that up there, that data on the sewer backup program? It's a little confusing because to the left of it, it says 9.5 million for 2022 expenditure. And I'm looking at that because I'm wondering, are the residents receiving, recouping any money from this damage to their, to their homes and their basements? And the majority of the money, oh, it's not up there yet?
Oh.
Yeah, right there. The majority of money is going to contractors and labor. And so, and then you, if you look at the top, backup work orders 1,900. And I remember, like, that's why I say deja vu, three years ago, I was saying, I know there's more people that are experiencing this dilemma. And I remember you saying that the criteria to qualify for SBU is legally, there's certain criteria they have to meet. And I remember asking the question, do we or can we change the criteria so more people can qualify as a, you can look there and contractors got 3.5, and then labor got 5.51. And so, and that's confusing also, Diana, because total spent 2004 to date. I don't know why you put that down there when at the top it talks about 2023. It's a little confusing to me why that would be there. Because if you look at the, I remember you gave us some statistics on how many applied, how many actually got help, and we're not helping enough people. And I don't know how we do it. I know the criteria. I said, if we could look at the criteria and help more people, I don't think we did that. Did we?
Yes, we, yes, we certainly have. So what you're seeing here, and, and just to be clear, this is just a, it's a snip, snippet from a longer report, so I'd be happy to bring that next, next week and share it with you in advance. That's why it has a running total for every year up to current on the bottom. We do, so MSD takes calls through our hotline or on our, on our computer in every, you know, whenever, whether it's a random event or not, and we investigate every one of those calls. MSD is only able to help people if they are experiencing a backup of wastewater from the public sewer. We cannot spend our dollars on things that are not related to a backup of public sewer, or backup of wastewater from the public sewer. And, and what is happening is that people that call us are experiencing water in their basement from, or sometimes it's not even in their home, they may have reported something that's just at the exterior of their property. But they, they are not experiencing a sewer backup. But we do respond, we do investigate, we provide them information. We cannot help them because that is not what we can use MSD dollars for. We are only providing sewer service. So it's, it's not even, it is somewhat the criteria of the program as is defined in the consent decree, but it's also that our, our funds are restricted and we cannot use them for what is a private, what is a private problem.
Okay, and I remember talking about overland flooding, for, for instance, and how can we help people that have overland flooding and maybe not sewer flooding? And how are we able to do that? I mean, the numbers are so small that we have been able to help, as you were saying, because of criteria, but how, how are we able to help people that have flooding that maybe it's not from the sewer? What other funding or what other pot can we get it from?
I mean, there's, there's other agencies or other, you know, public solutions, but they would not be MSD. So whether it's, you know, it's, it's just, it's, we're not able to use our dollars for overland flooding or stormwater solutions or any of those. Sometimes these are failures of a private sewer lateral or private plumbing, and we're not able to use MSD ratepayer dollars for those situations. So it's, it's really just outside of our, you know, outside of our jurisdiction.
Well, look at the contractors, 3.5 million, we only had 1,900.
So, so can I, I just want to be clear on what that number is. So that is the sewer backup prevention program. So that's not in response to the, directly in response to calls. So we have the calls come in, we go out, we investigate. If it's an SBU, then we will provide cleaning, we will pay damage claims. People that have had more than one sewer backup that is because of the public sewer are then eligible for our prevention program, and that work is performed by contracted staff. They work with the homeowners to identify, you know, they do, they get into their homes, they get into their plumbing, and they perform construction work on their property. Sometimes it's just installing a backflow prevention device, sometimes it's a larger amount of plumbing rerouting and work on their property. That is performed by contracted labor, but it is all part of the program services that are provided to the eligible customers. So that, that's what that section is for.
The actual labor, it says 5.51 for labor, total funds spent, is that from 2004 to now?
No, that was just for that, that up through, that's in 2023.
Okay.
Those dollars are for, so mostly MSD staff, our crews do the response work. The, the initial investigation of the call is done by that, whereas that prevention work is contracted labor.
And then the contract is 3.5, so almost 9 million total for, and we're only helping 1,900 people. I don't get it. But what I did, my final comment, I guess, is whether or not, you were not asking for an increase this year for SBU. And I'm wondering, what if we reduced the amount of SBU allocation from 11 to, to 9 million? What do you think about that? Because you haven't been using it for a while, the full complement of money.
That's correct. I mean, it, it would be possible to reduce the SBU budget and to, again, come back if, if, you know, mid-year, we, we were looking and projecting that we needed more. Again, typically, we're going to need more for those claims and prevention program project costs, so we have time. But we also don't know when we're going to experience, you know, some of the storms we experienced a few years ago. And so I think it really just is up to the, to the board how it wants to manage that fund.
And you always come back, so, yeah, I'll be, okay, thank you. That's all I have.
You're good?
I think, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Ludo, yes.
Timely. On the question of overland flooding, I just want to remind the board, we do have, and it's been a, it's been an issue that has perplexed the, the county as a, as a whole and has been a subject of interest with this board for a while. We do have a, an ARPA grant currently out on the street for, for addressing overland flooding issues. I think that is due in late November. So we'll apprise the board when we get that back in, see what types of projects we receive that we might be able to help with through ARPA.
Great, that's great. Thanks.
Awesome.
Yeah.
I have one question back to, thank you for your presentation. Then I definitely want to hear from the folks. I'm sure they'll have some, something that might jog our, or pique our interest. But can, can we get down to the part of increases? What would be the increase? And the reason I'm asking is, ARPA is running out and help is running out, but bills are still there, and there are people, a lot of people that's struggling, particularly those in the quote unquote middle class, because they don't qualify for a lot of, when we get past ARPA, they don't qualify for a lot of things, as well as senior citizens. So what would be the impact on the ratepayer, if any? May not be, but if any.
I'm, I'm sorry, is the, the impact of the proposed rate increase?
Yeah. Can you just, what, what is that number again?
Yes.
Because you gave a lot of-
This is a, I know, this is a lot. And this is, you know, somewhat just a projection, because everybody's bills are different. But we've calculated that the average residential customer would have, with a 3% rate increase, that would amount to about $1.50 per month or $18 per year. So it, it really depends on your family, your home, your business, and your rates. So that's, that's just the number I shared. So again, you know, modest for some, but understand that's, an increase is an increase.
I know. I don't know the people that ever get the $1. I never, I've been looking for them.
It's not me.
It's not just you, but I'm just saying, every time they go with an increase on anything, taxes, oh my God, it'll be 50 cents, 25, $2.50, and it sounds so great. And then all of a sudden, people get their bills and it's about to be cut off and it's jumping through the roof. So I, I don't know what kind of, I'm not putting this on you, but I don't know what type of calculators we have, but if the people that only get $1 or $2 increase, will y'all please contact my office and show me your bills? Because I just, you know, it's like playing the lottery, you know? Everybody can win, and you don't run into anybody that wins. I did run into one person that won, but it's very rare. So that's the only thing that people, you know, we kind of sell it to the people, and the next thing I know, it's too late, they get a bill, and then they're screaming and mad at me and saying that we went up on them, and it's unaffordable to live in Hamilton County. So it's not just you, there's, you know, levies and different things, you know? It's only a dollar, it's only 25, but I mean, my cell phone bill. Oh, for $2 more, you can get this. Next thing I know, my cell phone's $200. So I understand, it depends on the people's usage, so thank you. I don't have any more questions. I appreciate your presentation. I appreciate your presentation. Um, if you would stick around, we do have two people that have signed up for the public hearing and there may be something that they say that you may want to, uh, respond to.
President, I had one more.
Oh, you had, oh, you had.
I was, I was saving it.
We're going for round two.
I don't mean to delay, I don't mean to delay, because I want to hear the public.
We're reliving, living our days at the State House now. We're going for round two, round two.
I, I said I was going to only ask a couple to share the mic, so here we are. Um, so, no, and, and it's, it's just more of a, um, it's, it, it, not even so much of a question, although I guess part of it is. So we, as a board, um, have talked about the approach for, um, relieving some of the stormwater going into the system, um, by creating green infrastructure to capture that water so that we don't have to treat it, right? Rainwater, stormwater, um, because it's just a waste to, to treat stormwater in a sewage treatment plant, doesn't, doesn't make any sense. And so I think we, we all agree that, you know, that's problematic. Um, is there anything in here? That, um, talks about, uh, build out of some green infrastructure to try to capture some of the stormwater before it enters the system? Uh, and it kind of leads into the overland flooding conversation where if we were to try to capture some of the water before it enters people's homes or enters the system, I think that would be a huge benefit to the community i- in a, in a big way. And I know we've talked about MSD and stormwater and the engineer and other agencies coming together to go after federal funding for some of this kind of green infrastructure and, and retention basins and that kind of thing. But is there anything in the budget that approaches the, um, the issues in that way?
See Ryan getting up, but I, I, my answer would be, um, not specifically, however, all of the planning work we're doing for future WIP, you know, wet weather program projects and solutions, we perform that in our planning and, you know, in our alternatives analysis. We are looking for solutions to address the combined sewer overflows that we're required to address through the WIP, um, looking for the most cost-effective solutions and, and looking at green infrastructure and, and, you know, all alternatives. Um, but unless I'm missing a specific, I, you know, I think generally that is part of the planning work that is in the CIP moving forward over the next, you know, five, 10 years, really. Did I miss something specific?
I, I don't want this to be overlooked because there is actually a really big project that diverts stormwater from our system that's in the CIP, but it's kind of hidden. Um, it's a collaborative project with ODOT that was approved, first approved last year for planning, uh, has to do with the Brent Spence Bridge construction. Um, and it, it reappears for additional design funding. It would be constructed in 2027 if approved. And what it does essentially is takes 110 acres of drainage that currently drains to our combined sewer system, and it will divert that to a storm-only sewer. It'll eventually get to the, the Ohio River instead of ever going into the treatment plant. It'll reduce CSOs, I think four, four of the CSOs will be eliminated with this project and, uh, we'll get full reimbursement from ODOT. So it's money that they were going to spend on the drainage, it's about 110 million dollars. Um, we've worked together and come up with this collaborative project where we do the work and they will reimburse us as the work progresses. Um, so it's in the CIP book. Um, because of the, the funding situation, we were, we put it in as $0 for construction, um, but with future legislation of, um, I think we, we got an estimate yesterday, it's about 113 million dollars. Um, and there's a, the MOU with a term sheet that's been circulating with the city and county attorneys. So that's something really important that will have a huge impact because that's a lot of water, um, a lot of runoff that will no longer enter the, the sewer system. And it's a lot of money on the table from a federal agency to, to, to come to, into Hamilton County for us that we would otherwise eventually have to pay for.
That's right, that's, that's good news. It's just, and I, I will, since, um, we want to hear from the speakers, I will continue the conversation later. Thank you, but that's good news.
Okay, we got Larry Falcon.
President Reese County Commissioners, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak about the MSD budget today. Uh, I am Larry Falcon. I'm former director of the City of Cincinnati's Office of Environment and Sustainability and a former MSD employee. I'm here today as an individual. Um, I have more to say than I can say during my allotted time, so you all have copies of my comments at your desk and I provided them to MSD as well. Uh, first, I want to say that I appreciate MSD's focus on asset management. There are far too many public agencies who always want to build something new and never want to take care of what they have. And MSD does a very rigorous job of tracking all its assets and the maintenance schedules for its assets and keeping that stuff working for the long haul is really, really important. So I really appreciate that focus from MSD. Uh, in my view, the biggest problem that MSD faces is intensifying rainstorms, our wet weather that's getting wetter and wetter. And bigger rain is a bigger challenge for MSD's system, um, to the tune of, um, in an average year, there are about 5,000 properties in MSD territory that suffer water damage, not all from the sewers, but they're all suffering water damage. And so it's affecting a lot of people. So there are a couple of strategies that I would like to see MSD pursuing in order to address that. The first one is implementing the impervious surface fee with credits for stormwater best management practices. Uh, MSD can't do this alone. We need landowners to hold water on their property and right now they have no incentive to do that. We need to get those financial incentives right so that's, landowners will help MSD with this problem by holding water.
I'm going to go give you another minute because, go ahead, I'm interested, go ahead.
I appreciate that. Um, stormwater infiltration wells. Um, what we have traditionally tried to do is take water sideways to the nearest stream or treatment plant. Another option is to take water vertically down to the aquifer and let it filter through nature's plumbing to get back to the surface water. There are thousands of infiltration wells in the state of Ohio, but it's a strategy that MSD generally has not used. I would like to see them use it more, especially in places where we have separated stormwater and we just dump it into the sea, into the combined sewers because we don't have another place to go with it. We can go straight down into the ground and, um, some places it'll work, some places it won't work, but I would like to see a set aside in the budget, some earmarked funds to at least pilot this, start doing a couple of them and through experience, we can know how broadly applicable it is. Third thing I wanted to shine a spotlight on is, uh, real-time controls. MSD is a national leader in smart sewers in having their real-time sensors and real-time controlled valves to be able to maximize storage within their system. It's proved to be a really cost-effective way to control stormwater within their existing system. We have in MSD territory hundreds of existing retention and detention basins, and we're not maximizing the storage capacity in those basins because we don't have real-time controls on the outlet. They lead to a six-inch pipe, that six-inch pipe flows every time there's water in the basement, even if we're surcharging. Um, we don't have the ability to have those basins, the holding capacity of those basins help us. So if we could have a cooperative program between MSD and the owners of those basins to be able to hold water when they have excess capacity and release that water when the system can handle it, we can take the smart sewers that they already have to the next level through public-private partnership, hold a lot more water within our existing basins. Uh, final comment that I wanted to make is just in support of the anaerobic digester for the Little Miami Treatment Plant. Ever since the Little Miami incinerator closed in 2015, we've been trucking raw sludge to Rumkey. And trucking raw sludge to Rumkey is not the thing to do with raw sludge. So the sooner that we can get a system built to be able to handle that sludge appropriate, more appropriately, uh, the better it is. I would ask you to support that project. Um, thank you very much for your time. I'd be happy to continue this discussion, um, with anybody who's interested.
Thank you, thank you very much for your comments. It's very, uh, yeah, thank you. Very good. Oh, I'm sorry, everybody's waiting on me. I'm looking, my next, I'm sorry, Marilyn Wall, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to comment today. Um, wanted to start off by, um, acknowledging the county's longtime support for green infrastructure and, um, stormwater removal and other projects that will help reduce overall costs and expenses for MSD. And so we're continually, I guess, mystified and, um, concerned that we did not have projects like this in Phase 2A. We don't have any projects like this scheduled in 2024. We don't have, even in the five-year plan, we don't have any projects for, except for one project for specifically to get stormwater out of the system. Um, somewhat related to that is the project Brian was just talking about. We keep hearing different stories from ODOT about what's going to be done or not done compared to what MSD says is going to be done. And we really think that needs to be ironed out soon because the, all that environmental information has to go into Brent Spence Bridge, um, environmental assessment, which is supposed, is already late, but it was supposed to come out either, supposed to come out this month or next month. And we really think it's important to detail a lot of the things like what the long-term liabilities are, who's going to maintain and operate the system. Um, is ODOT really going to separate sewage? They told us they weren't. So, you know, we really want to see us get that nailed down so we know what's, um, what, what is going to be planned for ahead. But, um, it's, it's just very frustrating to not see more work being done on, on green infrastructure and other projects, save money for the ratepayers in the long run as well as it help address the storm, um, the intense storms that we're seeing that, um, Mr. Falcon talked about. Also would like to see, um, with the Phase 2B plan of the wet weather plan, um, that before it's submitted to US EPA, that we really have a robust discussion with the public about what's going to be included in that plan. It's due next June, so there's not a lot of time to get this together, but we would really like to see a comprehensive plan that really emphasizes addressing the stormwater issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, I'd like to enter for a record, the testimony of Larry Falcon. And, um, did you, Mary, did you give us something? Uh, let's see. Do we have it? Okay. Second page, okay. So I'd like to enter for the record, uh, Marilyn Wall's testimony and Larry Falcon's testimony as well. Is there anyone else here to speak for this, uh, public hearing? Vice President Drehouse, you seem to.
Well, do we have another hearing? What, what is the schedule here? Do we have another hearing next week?
Yes, we have another.
Yeah, I, I, I want to pursue this green infrastructure piece. Um, you know, I, we've been saying, from where I sit, we've been saying it for seven years, um, talking about green infrastructure and our prioritization of that. And I, I agree with, um, Marilyn Wall that it is, it is frustrating to not see more of it in the plan. I understand the project that you refer to, Ryan, and, and how it impacts the CSOs, and that's very good news. That's not what, the green infrastructure I'm talking about is, is the upstream infrastructure that solves two things. One is keeping the water out of the system, the other one is the overland flooding issue. And so killing two birds with one stone here, I think makes sense. So I will have, I have more questions next week, prepare the board for that. I'm going to have more questions about green infrastructure next week, just to get a better understanding of what research has been done to try to accomplish one of the priority goals of this board. Thanks.
Thank you. MSD, be prepared for more questions. All I do is turn it over, so you all be prepared for some answers. Commissioner Dumas, did you have anything else?
I have nothing.
On this?
I appreciate the pamphlet that you guys gave, this was Hamilton County being included on the cover, um, so I appreciate that. After all, lots of money, so we can do what we need to do.
I do have one question, Mr. Ludo. I don't know if it falls in this because I need to find out more about this. We heard a lot about build back better infrastructure, is that just bridges? Or do we, does any of that fall with what we need? Because we, we certainly need the federal government's help with some of this capital component.
There's been a lot of different infrastructure funding coming through the, the federal and state government. I know over the past several years, now MSD has applied for, for some of that. So, um, we can pull together a report for, for next time, um, to show how that grant funding has been applied for, leveraged, et cetera.
I don't talk about the build back better, that just happened.
Uh, uh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about infrastructure funding.
Yeah, infrastructure, I thought build back better was supposed to be all this money that we were supposed to be getting. Is this a, I'm just trying to find out.
I, I'll have to look into whether.
Yeah, yeah, you get back to it, I just wanted to find out. I need more build back better money. I heard about it and, uh, they said we're going to get all this money and people wanted us to support them. I'm just finding out, does this, because when you say infrastructure, obviously that's really broad, but I'd like to know, does anything fall under here? Not necessarily new projects, but some projects that's been on the books that we could use some, some help on. And then also next week, I'll probably be asking, uh, this question in advance. When you say you've got, um, flooding, for example, in your basement or whatever, I know you have the, we have a little grant program, whatever, but does that affect your, does that in any way affect your water bill?
Whether the.
Yeah, if you have a flood in your basement, does, does that affect anything? That doesn't affect it at all?
I think it would affect the, the water bill.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, but, uh, we can follow up with you on, on the question too as well, see, make sure we're answering it appropriately.
Okay, I asked that because a constituent called me about that. They say every time they flood basement, it seemed like the water bill would jump up. So I just wanted to make sure.
If it's a broken, if it's a broken service line or something, it could.
That's my point, they got something going on. Okay, great, okay, uh, there, nothing else further to come. Thank y'all for coming down and, uh, I make a motion to come out of the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all, thank you so much. See you next week.
All right, thanks.
Okay, moving to the agenda. Engineer. Our engineer here, did we lose? Oh yeah, we do have public comments. Okay, but I just want to see the engineer, I didn't want him sitting around. He's not here, okay. All right, we're going to move to public comments and then go back to the engineer. Open it up, Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. Um, I, I want to pile on to some of the conversation that's already happened. Um, there was a meeting last week, uh, here with the city, the county, MSD, the engineer, stormwater, um, all sitting together trying to figure out what federal funding is available through the, um, infrastructure bill. There's something called BRIC that we think there might be some opportunity to apply for dollars to make sure that we're pulling down as much federal funding as possible across the board for especially overland flooding, uh, retention and that kind of thing. So, um, more, more to come, we're trying to, um, just make sure we're taking advantage of that federal funding as it becomes available. Also, I, I attended a couple, there's been a lot of groundbreakings, um, this week, which is great news. Um, one up on Miami Avenue up in Madeira, um, a groundbreaking to catalyze the business district. They benefited from one of our grants, a community revitalization grant. Um, and so, uh, they, they were kicking that off and it's going to be a great project. They're really going gangbusters up there and it was fun to see everybody. Uh, and then there was a groundbreaking this morning at Van Dalia Point over in Northside. This is, uh, for, I believe it was 52 affordable housing units with partnership with Urban Sites, CDF, uh, the city, the county, and over the Rhine Community Housing. Um, this is one of the projects where we were the last money in with our, um, with our ARPA dollars, the 40 million that we set aside. And so this is one of those projects that got going because of the county dollars that were put in. So it was, and Commissioner Reese, I know you were there, um, but it's a really great project and it's, it is next to a transit system, so it'll be really great for those, um, affordable housing units to take advantage of the transportation that is right next door. Uh, and then also went to the AED presser with the sheriff and, and both of my colleagues to celebrate the fact that enough money has been raised to put AEDs in all of the sheriff's deputies' vehicles. Um, so that was phase one and it's very important. Um, there is a phase two now underway to make sure that all of the law enforcement vehicles throughout the county, no matter whose jurisdiction they fall under, whether it's Delhi Township or Springfield Township, that all those cruisers are also equipped with AED. equipped with AEDs. And so they're trying to raise a million dollars, uh, for that initiative. Um, I've talked to the administrator. I, I will be interested to see if, um, the county can play a part in phase two of the AED, um, effort as well. And then lastly, um, just a reminder, Election Day is, uh, on Tuesday. Early voting is underway right now. I do have the schedule. It's on the Board of Elections website. Um, so today and tomorrow, uh, 7:30 to 7:30 are the hours for the Board of Elections. Saturday, they're open from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM and Sunday from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And then Monday, there is, um, there is a day where, uh, election workers can be recognized. It's a, it's a larger, um, event. I think it's either federal or statewide. And, um, I, I know my office was working on something more formal to get the, um, support of both of you to, uh, recognize our poll workers, recognize our election workers, to thank them for their service the day before the big event, which is Election Day on Tuesday. And so more to come on that, but hopefully we can maybe, I don't know, um, we're trying to coordinate schedules, I think, uh, to see if there's availability on Monday for all three of us to go out and thank the election workers for all their service. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. Just a few things. Um, I participated in the White House Intergovernmental Affairs Weekly Webinar, and they were mainly talking about the Israeli conflict and, um, what they're planning on doing, uh, as it relates to that. Real generic, of course. And so, um, and talked somewhat about workforce, uh, development and what will be coming forward. A lot of times we get mandates to do things, but as you were saying about build back better, we don't always get the money to do what is being requested to do. So hopefully the money will flow down. Um, had a, um, a Zoom meeting with Tom Fernandez of MIVI, who's looking at infrastructure in our local area, specifically working in Forest Park right now with the mayor of Forest Park to, uh, generate some ideas and strategies for that area as it relates to infrastructure. And, uh, as was said earlier, attended the press conference for AEDs, uh, at the sheriff's office. Um, they said there's a total of 500 public safety vehicles that would need AEDs. I'm not sure if that's minus the 100 that were obtained, but they did mention a number of 500. And as was said, the million dollars that's needed in, in 90 days. Um, and it's just ironic to me that Damar Hamlin, who was, who we had the incident with on the field, and he was saved, uh, because of the AED and other, um, hospital personnel, that he will be coming back for a game with the Bengals today, um, on Sunday, not knowing if he's going to play or not, but it's not by coincidence, I think. Um, in addition, um, I would like to ask an update, um, from Jeff as it relates to the agreement with, um, strategies to prevent homelessness. If there's an agreement, if there's a RFP that goes out each year, I'm not sure. I was personally involved with, um, a family of five who were, they were trying to get help in housing and food and lots of things. And so, uh, I would say my interaction was, I, was less than favorable for me. Um, they did finally get a place at the YWCA. I'm, I'm happy about that. I know they are too. Um, but I would like to know, even though strategies to prevent homelessness, they have many partners. Do they have an ongoing agreement? Do we review it every five years or what? Um, because I was not, as I said earlier, not satisfied with the interaction that I received, um, trying to work with a family and not because I'm a commissioner, but because I am also a resident and, uh, uh, there was somewhat a, a lack of sensitivity. So at this point, lots of people are working with the homeless. And so whether or not we need to diversify not only the partnership, but, uh, the entity that decides what partners we use. So I'd like to get clarification on when their agreement, uh, ends. Um, does, is it, like I said, ongoing or what it is? And then in addition, an update on our animal care. We had talked about how overcrowded we are, are at the Cincinnati Animal Care. Lots of dogs are getting sick again. They're still overcrowded. What is the status? And this is specifically Jeff, I'm relating this to you. Uh, what's the status of our building another facility? I know that will take a while, but as far as overcrowding in general, where are we on that? Have we chosen a site? Um, what's up with that for the county? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, wanted to, uh, also say, like I said, all three of us, uh, as indicated earlier, uh, was happy to, uh, speak on behalf of the board at the Hamilton County Sheriff's, uh, press conference yesterday regarding the AEDs. And one of the things, although Christ Hospital is taking the lead with this particular, uh, project, I also want to, uh, thank the Rotary Club, uh, for taking, uh, this on as well and kind of leading this project. Uh, Damar Hamlin, uh, brought everybody to their knees, no matter what team, whether you liked football or not, if you liked football, the whole world was watching. And, uh, as I indicated at the State of the County, uh, where I was happy to have honored UC Health medical staff, uh, that, uh, worked on Damar Hamlin and, and, uh, kept him alive today. It really showed Hamilton County and our medical system. But it also showed us that, uh, if you're not at the game, uh, where you have medical right nearby, uh, how can we save other Damar Hamlins out there? And so I wanted, uh, also thank, uh, Sheriff McGuffey, uh, for, uh, being open to this, uh, innovation where you put the AEDs and you have them mobile. You have them in the, in the, uh, cruisers. And so, uh, you don't have to be a, a football star, uh, that we, you would have the same type of care. Um, and so I thought that was a big deal for us as a county and our board to put in 125,000 of the ARPA money. And a lot of times we, we have put other ARPA dollars in different things that we've been concerned about the, the fact that it's a one time. But now this one time will go beyond one time because it's a purchase of equipment. And so, um, I, uh, was happy to support that, uh, following up on getting it in all cruisers, whether you are, uh, the sheriff's department, or you're in a village or a township. I certainly agree. And I don't know if this is a qualifier, but maybe, uh, Mr. Ludo looking at our CDBG dollars as well to see if those somehow qualify for equipment, uh, for, uh, different, uh, entities. That may be, that may be one. I'm not saying that's the only one, but put that down as a possibility for the other, uh, municipalities. Uh, the other thing I would say is I think we should have one of the AEDs on the 513 relief bus because it's going all across the county and you, and we have medical services on the bus. And we, there may be a situation where an AED is, uh, is needed. We have other equipment, but I don't think we have an AED, uh, on that particular, uh, bus in the medical side. Uh, in addition to that, and, um, in addition to that, uh, I do want to say it was a really good win. Bengals going to California and the 49ers, I had to slip that in there. Uh, all my friends on the West Coast, but somehow they're not answering the phones and our numbers have been disconnected. I don't know what's going on with the, with the West Coast, but that was an impressive, uh, impressive win. And I, and I wish them the best. The other thing is FC Cincinnati in playoffs. I mean, we've got some playoffs going on. Uh, so, uh, just wanted to say, uh, great job to FC Cincinnati and all of, uh, the energy that's out there right now, uh, for us in sports. Uh, in addition to that, I also did attend this morning, the groundbreaking. And, uh, as indicated before, there are a lot of groundbreakings. And these groundbreakings are seeds that this board has been able to put the seeds and we're starting to see the seeds move. And again, these investments are investments that will be sustainable long-term because we're building and helping to build affordable housing. Uh, so 52 units, um, today in Northside. I was happy to speak, uh, and also let them know that our board put in 2.9 million dollars to this project. 2.9 million. And then not too long ago, we were down in Over the Rhine and we were doing another groundbreaking. We've been turning, oh, turning this dirt a lot. And, uh, that is senior housing that's going up down there. So we are on the move. Hamilton County, uh, bridging this gap and trying to help with this issue of affordability. Um, and it's very much needed. I was talking to a senior the other day and she was saying that it's getting very rough in her senior housing. Rough. And she said people are trying to take over, drug dealers and everything. And she's scared to even come out in the evening. And this is a person, she owned a house and of course too much house for her as she got older. But seniors should be able to be in good housing and not have to worry about their safety. So these projects, uh, I'm definitely going to continue to be asking about the safety aspect of them because I don't want to just build them up and they're pretty at the ribbon cutting. And then after the ribbon cutting, it's not safe. The other thing is I want to make sure we've got the good brick. Now, I'm not a construction person, but some of the brick is not like it used to be. You know, we had bricks that, you know, if a storm come through, it don't go nowhere. And then sometimes we put up stuff that if the wind blow, it looked like the whole thing's going down. So we want to make sure that they're putting, uh, those, we want these things to last a long time. So I wanted to, to highlight that. Um, in addition, I also attended, um, good family friend over the years, um, two-time World Series, um, Hall of Famer, should be in the MLB Hall of Fame. He's in the Reds Hall of Fame, known as the Cobra, Dave Parker. Dave Parker received his own street, uh, called Dave Parker Way. I don't want to thank Mark Jeff, Councilmember Mark Jeffries and Vice Mayor Jan Michelle Lemon Kearney that led those efforts. And then Charlie Frank from the Cincinnati Reds Foundation. Uh, it was just great. Uh, he and his wife Kelly were there and were very ecstatic about this. And Dave Parker coming from South Cumminsville, coming out of South Cumminsville and going to two world champions. Um, and it's just a shame. He should be in the Major League Baseball Hall of Fame. I mean, the numbers are there. Uh, he's fighting Parkinson's, but even with fighting Parkinson's, he's still helping the youth. He volunteers over at the youth academy, Reds Youth Academy and helping the next generation, uh, that's coming up. Uh, he did a lot. He came out of, I think, Central High School. It's called Central High School then, Cincinnati Public Schools, but it was Central High School and went all the way, uh, to the, to the World Series. So I was just very excited to be there and speak, uh, with my experience with him. Um, I remember coming home from college. I went to Grambling, Louisiana, and I fell in love at that time with Popeye's Chicken. I'd never had it. And Cincinnati never had any Popeye's Chicken. And I came home and they opened up when I saw the first Popeye's Chicken at Bond Hill. Yeah, him and his wife. And I spent a lot of time there. And I told him I was going to run for city council. He was my, he was the first celebrity to endorse me, Dave Parker at Popeye's Chicken. So, uh, it was, it was great. So it was great to see him. It was great to see George Foster, um, who says, he says, "I'm your second dad." Uh, my father used to work for George Foster. I went to every Reds game and he practically was part of helping to raise me. So it was great to see him. He said, "My daughter is back." Um, and then Ron Oyster, who went to Withrow, came out. He's a legend from Withrow way before my time, but it was great to see, uh, those legends out, uh, yesterday. So that was a good, good event. Um, in addition to that, I also, let me see, what else do I want to make sure I talked to about? I do want to mention this. Um, I did, uh, tour the YWCA. Uh, they're building a, a new domestic violence shelter. Uh, we went to the old one, the old one that they have now. Everybody congregates in one room. The one they want, there, that they bought and move, and trying to move forward with would be more of an apartment style. So the family would have their own area, the children, their own place, privacy. Um, and so I got a chance to tour that. And I know the city had put in, um, about a half a million dollars to try to help get that moving for them. Um, and I had asked, I want to, uh, my, my colleagues to know, I asked, uh, Mr. Ludo to double check and then certainly, you know, I'd like to present and see, we had $2 million left over that wasn't used that the Port Authority, we had earmarked for them. Uh, Mr. Ludo said they're looking at doing something with some of the money, but not all of it. And that money, uh, would just go back. And I want to look at, is there any way some of those dollars this year could go toward helping the YWCA with this new domestic violence shelter? Uh, so I just wanted, um, you all to kind of know that I had asked that question and he'll get that information to all of us. And I'd like us to try to consider if we can help him in that way. So I wanted to put that out. Um, and then lastly, on the grants, uh, well, not lastly, Pastor Tate had reached out to me. Um, he had, he and some, uh, folks do gun violence reduction and I had sent them to Mr. Ludo and, and some folks from the county, met with them back in May. Um, but Pastor Tate said nobody got back with them. And, and that was in May and there were a couple emails. Um, I like to find out what's going on because he was, um, concerned that he had met and everything and then was not part of, I guess, applying or whatever the next thing to do and may have missed out. I know that he has been on the front lines of anti-violence, uh, campaign. He may have reached out to other offices as well. I'm not sure. Uh, but I am concerned if no one got back with Mr. Tate, whether we do things. We've had that with a couple people, whether they get the grant or not, there needs to be some communication, uh, telling them yes or no, you know, and possibly why. So, um, I wanted to mention that because I know, uh, he called me and he was not happy about it. And I can understand. If you come and meet and then you send emails and then there's, nobody responds, and then he sees on television other programs that have been done and nobody, you know, he's still waiting thinking, um, he's waiting to hear back. So I just wanted to, um, uh, highlight that. I don't know, uh, Commissioner Dumas, is that something?
Yeah, I'm not sure who he met with, but I know he does great things in the community. Um, you know, when we're trying to help groups like that, uh, there's been a lot of roadblocks, I just have to say, uh, for our INSPIRE program, a lot of roadblocks, a lot of delays. It's really frustrating to me because the people that have applied, they need the money now to work with these youths. And so a lot of, uh, administrative roadblocks, I should say. And so I'm not, like I said, I don't know who he met with, but his program is critical to making a change in the community. And we need to, we can't do things like we used to do, you know? And it's, and people that are handling the process of approving, um, the money to go forth, I understand that, but there's a need out there for the, for, that's why it was developed, just that initiative. And, and we need to move. These are people and kids that are, young people that are waiting for the ability to go and be, have their groups be functional. So I, uh, I hear what you're saying and I'll check and see if he, uh, put in specifically what our initiative, I'm not sure, but I will check. But, uh, it's just, you know, just, it's too slow for me. Um, and, um, I see him hitting his light on, but I know, you know, everybody understands there's an administrative component to it, but then people come in that have the administrative part to deal with to make sure the money goes a certain place, but don't realize, and we understand that because we're responsible, but don't realize these are people that are waiting. Um, and it's very frustrating for me.
Yes, thank you. And I think that was his frustration because it's May and now we're in November. And he, I think he was still waiting until he saw something on television.
So Madam President, just very quickly on that topic, because I, and I've only had a chance to follow up very briefly because you and I spoke on the phone right before the meeting. Uh, but I, I do know that there was an email response to him on his email, um, that he sent, uh, from the folks that he had met with. So, uh, I'll follow up on the details of that, but I think the, the question was, he felt he didn't get a response. And I believe there was a response. I'll, I'll have to follow up on the nature of the response, but there was an email back. Uh, so, but I'll follow up with your office directly on that, just as to the nature of it.
Okay, yeah, please just follow. Because his whole thing is, in his mind, he was still waiting. And so he saw a TV, uh, story that showed, you know, we had done $4 million with the, with the resiliency grants and those kind of things. And I do think it's important to keep in mind, these are people who've never done business with Hamilton County because Hamilton County's never been out there. Like we, you know, we, we, we're putting it out. We're saying we want, come on, everybody. And here's a fair opportunity for everybody. So this is first interaction with maybe Hamilton County. They might know how to interact with the city or this and that, but Hamilton County, we're out here in a whole different way. we're out here in a whole different way, uh, with our, with our board. So now we got people who have good programs, good things, but they just never, they didn't even know where we located, you know? So he, uh, according to him, he's still waiting and that's since May, he's still waiting and we in November, he's thinking, he's still, he's waiting to hear back about, about the process. So I would just hope, not just getting us email, but get back with the person and let us know, maybe somebody you touched base with him and let us know what's, what's going on because he was, uh, he didn't get angry, but he, he was a little angry.
Can I ask, was it Inspire or was it something else?
No, this was, this was something different.
Okay.
I think this was before Inspire was in existence. It was just, he kept coming and saying, "Hey, I got a program." He might be available for Inspire, I don't know, but...
I, I was, I was just gonna comment that even though he might have gotten a response, that's really not worth even saying because that was in May. I don't know when the response came in. It's unacceptable on our side if we responded, didn't do any more with it. It's just all unacceptable, even if he did get a response.
Thank you. Well, my next thing, my last thing on here is dealing with the Western Hills Viaduct. Now, wherever anybody is, on whatever side of the coin about the railroad, there's two things that bother me. One is clean drinking water. I don't play with that after Flint, Michigan. I don't play with it, which kind of holds everybody responsible if the water is dirty. I need to know, is the water dirty? Number two, it said Western Hills Viaduct is falling apart. Now, we did have some things chipping away and I'm trying to figure out how many different levies or taxes we gonna need to fix Western Hills Viaduct. We went with a $5 license plate thing. I remember I battled that, uh, but people are paying $5 more on a license plate. People are paying more. We came with a gas tax, not us, because I don't think any of us was there then. I was against raising taxes on gas when I was at the State House. It never went anywhere, but when I left, it happened. So we, they said, "Five dollars on a, on a plate, taxes on gas." Then we came with issue seven. They said, "Issue seven gonna solve this thing, we gonna get the money." We, the people went, they went up on people's taxes and then we had a press conference with everybody and they said, "Western Hills Viaduct is done, it's a done deal now, we got the money." I don't know why it's chipping and then I don't know how we now tax it again. And they saying now we need the money for, I gotta, I mean, I got the press release.
Well, it's, it's...
It said, "Western Hills Viaduct."
The engineers here, it's fully funded, it's just a matter of getting a complaint, we can answer it.
Yeah, I'm not talking about, it's not us. I'm giving you a press release that said, "The Western Hills Viaduct." This ain't Alicia Reese saying none of this. I'm saying the same thing you're saying. I thought it was funded.
It's fully funded.
I just want to make sure.
It's fully funded. And, and we were part of the funding stack with the city and then the...
Right. Well, what I'm saying to the people that's watching, because I got some people calling me saying, "Hey, I thought, I saw you at a press conference and you said it was done." Here's what I say, on here, it has the Western Hills Viaduct. So it's real scary. If 22 doesn't pass and it has the Western Hills Viaduct. So I just wanted to, I didn't want people calling, I had some people calling me. Here it is. "This sale does not go through, the city will be confronted with a frighteningly real catastrophe, less money and more impending infrastructure disasters like the long overlooked Western Hills Viaduct," which is literally falling apart before our eyes. I'll get you a copy of this engineer. This, I didn't say it, this is what it said, the headline. Scary is the word. And it lists this, and I mean, I'm just as mad as you are, Vice, Vice President. It says this, and, and Commissioner Dumas, I just wanted, because people was calling us because we were the ones at the press conference talking about it's done and with the engineer and with issue seven, how many times I'm gonna pay for Western Hills Viaduct now? That's what somebody asked me. I done paid for it with the $5, I done paid for it with the gas tax, I done paid for it with issue seven and you said that's it. But on here it says, "If this sale does not go through, the city will be confronted with a frighteningly real catastrophe, less money and more impending infrastructure disasters like the long overlooked Western Hills Viaduct," which is literally falling apart before our eyes. Number one, I want to know why is it falling apart before our eyes and we don't pay for it? That's one thing. And then two, I don't want to get involved in telling people what to do on this, you do what you need to do on this railroad, but please, I don't want to be held accountable when we stood at a press conference and we all were grinning and we gave our word that this is a done deal. Now, don't get mad at me, I didn't put no press release out, but this part has to be stricken or they need to dial that back because I don't, I don't, I don't think that's right. And we did a lot to get the people to go forward and go with it and promises that we made. I don't want to get in trouble, I'm gonna sit because there, there are people down the street that get mad at me, but it's on here and, uh, you can get it off of Sharon Coolidge's, it's, it's, it's on there. It was a press conference. And they had the press conference on October 31st at 3 o'clock. And guess where they were gonna have it? Regional location, now y'all won't get mad at me. Western Hills Viaduct, 1408 Queen City Avenue, Cincinnati, Ohio 45214. So we'll get you a copy. Yeah, we can't control what they say, but, but, but I'm talking about elected officials. We, I'm not saying I'm controlling, I got, we got to speak out. We have responsibility to speak out if we standing there telling everybody it's paid for and it's ready to go, but it does bring up the other issue of there was some chips or something failed. So our engineer's coming up and he could tell us what is that and, and why.
Yeah, I, I can clarify a little bit of that. That was, that was some spalling of concrete of the, the bottom side of the upper deck at an expansion joint. Um, city crews did go out and maintain and repair that after some of the material fell. Uh, didn't do any damage to any vehicles, didn't hit anything. It was just, uh, some spalling concrete. The existing viaduct, we don't have funding to maintain that. The city is maintaining it as they normally do. The, the funding that we have is to replace it with the new structure and then remove the existing one. So there is maintenance going ongoing every day on the existing structure to maintain the safety. It's not a safety issue, it was, it's some fascia concrete that just spalled off. It's nothing structural. I understand it's an issue when it falls on traffic. So, you know, the city has put netting up underneath and, and done different things to prevent it from falling on the roadway.
Okay, and what's our timeline again?
We, we are currently under contract with a construction manager at risk, um, a Walsh Cozying Joint Venture. They're under contract right now, they're in the innovation period where they're looking at, uh, we, we brought the contractor in to work with the design team to try to figure out how to cut the costs as much as possible, make it as constructable as possible so that it can be built in a timely, quick manner of, safely over the railroad tracks. So we have the design team working with the construction team.
Okay, so this is already moving?
It's, it's moving now, yeah. I meet every, uh, three days with, with the team from the, uh, Walsh Cozying Joint Venture.
Okay, I just wanted to...
Yeah, no, that, it's moving, yeah.
I thought we paid for it.
Yeah.
So it is paid for.
It's under contract, the, the, again, what the city does with whatever money they get from the sale or the lease of the railroad, they have traditionally used that for infrastructure. And I think that's their intent, is if they sell it, that the revenue from the proceeds would go towards their infrastructure annually.
I just wanted to know about, I'm not trying to tell the city what they do, I've done my part at the city, but I just...
My guess...
...about when they say, "Western Hills Viaduct," and then people...
My, my guess is they're, they're, they're comparing other city infrastructure to the condition of the Western Hills Viaduct. But the Western Hills Viaduct is already funded and ready to go in the process of being replaced.
Okay, thank you.
So hopefully that helps.
Yes, that was, I hope they got you on camera so I could give them your clip. It's paid for. Okay, Mr. Aludo, do you have anything?
I have no by leaves or comments, Commissioners.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Engineer, don't sit down too quick, it's your turn.
Great, thank you. Um, just two items today and both of these items, um, are a reflection of what my office does, working with other jurisdictions. Um, item number one is a resolution for an, uh, intergovernmental agreement with Miami Township. Uh, we will join with them in renting a rubber tired loader to use for snow and ice season. Um, we work with Miami Township, we share a facility with them. This, the rental of this equipment, we joint in the, uh, in the payments, uh, will not exceed, or it's a $2,000 rental and it's got, we've, uh, set up a maximum of $10,000 for any repairs that may need to be done on it during that time and this money comes out of the Road and Bridge Funds. Item number two is a resolution for a joint agreement with the City of Harrison. Uh, City of Harrison had a resurfacing contract on Harrison Avenue. Uh, a portion of Harrison Avenue is, uh, in the county and it is a county roadway and we, uh, agreed to participate with them. Uh, this would allow us to expend up to $20,000 out of Permissive Auto Funds to pave the portion within the county.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Vice President Drehouse.
Questions.
Commissioner Dumas.
Just one question, um, what is the balance in your revenue?
I don't know what it is currently, it's probably around, around eight to 10 million.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we, our intent is to keep six months' worth of revenue in our, in the balance.
That's all I have. Okay, I make a motion to approve items one and two.
Second?
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Aludo, consent agenda.
Commissioners, uh, consent agenda, I'll just walk through these very briefly. Item number three, uh, is a, uh, purchase order for a flooring contract. This is, uh, flooring for the 11th and 12th floor, this is Court of Appeals over at 2:30 East 9th, uh, for 161,000. Uh, item number four is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Ford, for F450, uh, for planning and development, uh, $71,422. Uh, item number five, human resources, this is another, as, as the board is aware, uh, we typically do a waiver of the G11, of the 4117 G11 provision in the Ohio Revised Code when we start negotiating, especially with a public safety conciliation unit. Um, just a good faith, um, way to start negotiations, basically saying that we will go back retro, um, if, if needed, um, following negoti, if negotiations take, um, a longer period of time. Um, items, starting on item six is all JFS, uh, so I wa, walked through these fairly quickly. Uh, item number six is an agree, an agreement with Neco, uh, for, uh, foster care services, $45,000. Uh, item number seven is an agreement with Children's Hospital, Children's Hospital, uh, uh, Medical Center, uh, for nursing consulting services for 1.1 million. Uh, item number eight is also a, uh, agreement with Children's Hospital, Hospital Medical Center for Medical Screening Services for 176,000. Uh, item number nine is an amendment of an agreement, uh, with, uh, Fox, with, uh, Fox Run Center is the provider there. Uh, this is for residential treatment services for 975,000. Item number 10, uh, is an amendment to an agreement with Kelly Youth Services, this is for group home services of 1.5 million. Item number 11, uh, is an amendment to an agreement with, uh, Mill Creek of Arkansas for Residential Treatment Services, $200,000. Uh, item number 12 is the renewal of an agreement with Lakeland Behavioral Health Services, uh, Residential Treatment Services, uh, for 180,000. Item number 13, uh, is a renewal and amendment of an agreement with, uh, Piney Ridge Treatment Center, uh, Residential Treatment Services for 75,000. And item number 14 is an MOU between the Board and Ohio Department of Job and Family Services for receipt of, of, um, Benefit Bridge Pilot Program funding in the amount of 2.8 billion dollars. Uh, and finally, Commissioners, item number 15 is, uh, reports of no objection to five liquor permits, uh, from the sheriff, uh, to be received for the record. That is the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Uh, open it up, Vice President Drehouse. Commissioner Dumas.
Um, Jeff, I'm wondering if we can, we used to put down how many children were involved, for instance, um...
I have that information, if there's a specific, uh, in...
Just give it to me later then.
Okay, happy to.
That'll work, thank you.
Okay, I make a motion to approve items number three through 15.
Second?
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes. I have one additional thing, um, on the, um, rental assistance program, uh, that I understand no longer is taking applications, but, uh, before that, we had 6,500 plus people, uh, who had not, uh, it had not been resolved, funding had not gotten to their landlords or what have you. Um, I, one of the things I asked, is there, uh, a way that we can get a report each Thursday, uh, so we can let people know that number is going down? We, you know, we done 1,000 people, we done, so we can kind of get that down to zero. So if we could add that to our agenda.
Absolutely, and I, and Commissioners, I did get an, I, I don't have the number right in front of me, I did get an update very recently from Mr. Patton on that and I think actually the, the, the queue was even higher than that, but, uh, but it's down substantively, so I will pass that along to the board.
Okay, yeah, if we can have it Thursday, that way people watching can see us, what the progress is.
Absolutely.
All right, if there's no further business, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.